All right, folks, I know it's 5:30, but we're just pausing a second to make sure our technology is all squared away, so give us a moment, please. I apologize.
Hi there. This is a call from GoTo. To join your meeting, this conference will now be recorded.
And when Mr. Smith gives me a thumbs up, we'll carry on. Was that a thumbs up or a one? Thank you. So, welcome, everyone. Good evening. I called a city council meeting for Wednesday, February 24th, to order. A lot of folks have had things happen, and, you know, we went over 500,000, and a lot of people have been impacted, so moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman Condon, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the people for which the shame, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Brian, our city clerk, if you would please call the role. Dunn?
Here.
Dorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Peacock?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Ten percent, Your Honor? Thank you. So, again, good evening, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the city council, I again welcome everyone in attendance and those who are viewing on our different electronic devices. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind as we share and talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with our fellow Davenporters and viewers throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport even greater place for everyone. If you do have something while you're in the chamber here, like a phone, if you'd please consider putting it on silent or shutting it off, just so it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you have any something to say for the discussion agenda item, please just come to the podium. Please tell us your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us, and I wish you a good evening. So, next item. Will an Alderman please move the approval of the city council meeting minutes for February 10th?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Minutes are approved. Ms. Spiegel, city administrator, any update?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, ma'am. Will an Alderman please move approval of the report on the Committee of the Whole for February 17th?
I move.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Okay, we have two appointments and one proclamation. The appointments are to the Design Review Board. Cindy Grammance is a new appointment, and Matt Steinecker is a new appointment. I accept a motion. Motion to appoint. Is there a second? Second. Okay, very good. Any... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And we have one proclamation this evening, which I'll read, and it's, "Whereas the people currently serving sentences in the Scott County Jail will transition back into Davenport and Scott County after their sentences are served, and whereas these formerly incarcerated individuals will become part of a population, and whereas helping people with criminal records become productive members of society benefits their families in Davenport in many ways, including improving safety and preventing and reducing crime. Whereas formerly incarcerated individuals face numerous challenges that include but are not limited to finding work, housing, health care, and transportation, these challenges may lead to recidivism, health, social, and security concerns. And whereas federal and state leaders have worked to establish a policy that supports individuals who return to their communities after serving time in prison or jail or under custodial supervision, and whereas the National Day of Empathy includes representation from government, education, faith, and community-based organizations, as well as those formerly incarcerated, and is studying the needs of individuals who have been released from correctional institutions and working to increase the effectiveness of local reentry councils and smart criminal justice policies and/or practices, and whereas the National Day of Empathy serves to connect justice-involved individuals with resources and services important to successful reentry, and then decrease stigma by raising public awareness of the issues and challenges faced by formerly incarcerated individuals as they reenter our community. Now therefore, Mike Mattson, Mayor and City Council of Davenport, to hereby proclaim March 2nd, 2021, as a National Day of Empathy, and do urge all citizens to join in this observance. I'll accept a motion to approve.
I move.
Move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Aye.
Thank you. And Ladrina Wilson is not here, but we will make sure that she gets this proclamation. Thank you, everyone. Okay? Next thing, petitions and communications from council members and mayor. I'll quickly go first. Just wanted to let everybody know, today I received from the Iowa National Guard to the city of Davenport, and I'll read it, "Presented to the city of Davenport on behalf of the 1st Battalion 133rd Infantry Regiment for your incredible and patriotic support of our soldiers, families, and alumni. We are proud and humbled that from this day on, July 11th, will be known as the Iron Man Battalion Day, Iron Man Advance." And they wanted to specifically say that over the last few years, especially this last year, that they're so thankful to the city of Davenport for their support, to me as a mayor, to the city council, our staff that supports our citizen soldiers when they deploy, and they wanted to take a special moment. They couldn't be here tonight, but they came earlier and gave that to me. So, city of Davenport, be proud that they recognize the support we give to all our National Guard and folks that deploy, and are... There are many of them currently deployed overseas doing great work. So, thank you. All right, let's see. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things tonight. I first wanted to... I noticed this week was announced in the paper, the death of Mary Ann Tyler, Taylor, who was a longtime member of the Strike Preservation Commission. I served with her, and she was a lovely person and who cared very much about our city and its history, so my condolences to her family. So, I just wanted to mention that. And I also wanted to again mention that you have two more opportunities. If you haven't seen the wonderful Alice in Wonderland with the Davenport Junior Theater, there will be two more, three more shows, actually, February 27th at 4:00 p.m. and February 28th, 1:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. It is being performed via Zoom, and you can watch live stream for free, and you can go to www.davenportjuniortheater.org for more information. So, I hope if you're looking for something to do in the weekend coming up, you'll think about Alice in Wonderland. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a couple of things. One is, the Goose Creek Neighborhood Meetings continue. They've been going on for decades, and our next one is going to be this coming Thursday, the last Thursday of the month, and we get together and talk about issues. We get updates from the Davenport Police Department, and I appreciate all of those. And it's good meeting the neighbors. Things are greatly improved out there. I also have a question. I'd like Nicole to come up. One of the things that we're dealing with in Davenport is the Emerald Ash Forest, and ash trees are either dead, dying, or going to start dying, so it's time to take them down and mix them up with different species. So, you've had some people out that have been cutting trees. One of the questions I've been getting is, of course, we've got all the snow on the side of the road, so they're cutting the trees above the snowbanks. So, if you could talk a little bit about the tree cutting itself, and why, and what happens next?
Sure. Nicole Gleason, Public Works. So, we are still in the process of removing ash trees. If you... If a neighbor has an ash tree in their boulevard and is concerned about what may be replaced there, they are always welcome to reach out to our city arborist. We do have a list of varieties, and if a resident is interested, we do allow them to work with us on choosing that variety, if it's something that kind of meets our objectives of mixing up the different species, so we don't have a similar issue in the future. And of course, we will be returning to cut any stumps. So, there is information on our website, and of course, everyone's welcome to call or email our city arborist.
And I just wanted to say, I was one of the first ones, when you first started that program for Emerald Ash Forest, I was down in your office that day. We hadn't started it yet, but I got a beautiful elm tree that is now probably over 30 feet tall. And so, yeah, it's a great program, and it's a big job.
Thanks.
Thank you. And then, the last thing, I was... I would like to ask the mayor for a little discussion on the status of the SRO Task Force and the draft MOU and the meeting we had the other day with the school board.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee, and a kind of a synopsis of what we did. So, the Davenport School Board, the city of Davenport, the president, vice president, NAACP, the president, vice president of LULAC, and many other community members came together. It was a collaboration work session with the school board and the city. We've been working on, basically, since August, the community asking us to look at, discuss the, quite frankly, the relevance and how the SRO, meaning school resource officers, police officers, how we do that within the school. The school district comes to us. We provide what they ask as a service to them, but the community spoke, and the city council, and I heard that they had some concerns. So, we formed a task force and have been working on it. Alderman Condon has been kind enough to help us with that. Both our chief, our city administrator, the school district superintendent, school board members and others, and many other folks, to include NAACP and LULAC, have worked over months. And then, so the other night, we came together and discussed where we are with the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding. It was a briefing to both the city council and the school board with the understanding that they're getting feedback from some folks, to include all the wonderful folks up here. What I took from that is, we had great feedback, great recommendations, and we'll get together again, take those, add some, adjust some maneuver, and then soon, maybe March, the actual MOU will be presented to the city council and for discussion and approval. So, we've moved along, and we're to the point where we briefed, and we just got it a little fine-tuned now based on some feedback we received, both from the city council, the school board, and other members, to adjust, and we'll do that and present very soon.
Thank you. And I just... One more quick thing.
Please.
Thank you. I want to build on what the mayor said about COVID. We have now lost half a million people in the United States of America, and it's probably 10% higher than that, according to the CDC. That means that one out of every 650 Americans have died from COVID, and it's equal to, on the last 100,000 deaths, just in one month, the last month. It's more than we lost in World War I, plus World War II, plus the Vietnam War. So, it's a major impact on this country, both in terms of loss of family members, friends, neighbors, as well as just the trauma this country is going through. It's had a disproportionate impact on non-white Americans and residents, especially Black, Latinx, and Native Americans die at two to two and a half times the rate of white people. However, the good news is, the rate of vaccinations has doubled in the last month, and we, by July, we will have enough doses for the entire population of the United States. One thing that I think is important to remember is, even if you get COVID and don't die, some people are very strongly affected by inflammation that causes organ failure, organ damage and organ failure throughout the body, from the brain to the lungs, to some of the other organs. So, it's just really important that we don't put this as, oh, well, I didn't die, so I must be okay. There's lots of people that are still struggling with the impacts of COVID, even if they don't die. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pausing. Very good. So, I see the good Ms. Wilson is here. Ms. Wilson, I apologize. We read the proclamation already, but if it's okay, I'll meet you at the podium, represent it, and you may can say a few words.
First, my apologies for being late. I had some commitments with my children, and this came up a little bit last minute, and so I really appreciate this time to be with you. To our public servants, and to the staff, and to the citizens of Davenport, on behalf of Iman Consulting, who is partnering with Dream Court Justice on a bipartisan effort to address criminal justice reform, I am so honored to be in a city and live in a city that sees the value in this type of opportunity. This opportunity does not indicate that we don't take serious the victims who have been part of, also been justice-impacted, but it does acknowledge that redemption is should and can be a part of the criminal justice process. And so, with that in mind, I encourage each of you to consider participating in the Day of Empathy, if that is something you so choose, if your schedule allows. It does run from 9 until 4 at the local level, where we'll have individuals from across the state of Iowa participating, sharing their perspectives as returning citizens, as individuals who are college educators for college and prison programs across the state, as well as our Criminal Justice Reform Group that is convening locally to look at solutions here for our community. So, again, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to come before you, and also declaring March 2nd a Day of Empathy.
Thank you. Give her a hand. And I'll just say, Ms. Ladrina Wilson, thank you for your leadership on that and making us aware and keeping us squared away on what's important. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Not seeing any. Okay, we'll move on then to item 10, which is individual approval of items on the discussion agenda. So, we have one item tonight. First consideration of an ordinance for case REZ 20-09, being the request of SJ Russell, LC, on behalf of the Sophie Foster Revocable Trust to rezone the property located at 4607 East 53rd Street to C2 Corridor Commercial District and R-MF Multifamily Residential District. Note, the protest rate is over 20%. This requires eight votes of the council to approve. Is there any public with comment? So, I will read a few emails as people are getting ready to come up, as I've done before during COVID, because we limit who can come into council. If you send this stuff to me to an agenda item, I'll read it into the record. So, I have a couple with me, so please bear with me. All right? Mayor Mattson, etc. "I'm writing in support of the rezoning of the Sophie property, Sophie Foster property at 4607 East 53rd Street. My restaurant, Monarch, is a neighboring business and property tax-paying entity with the city of Davenport. This development will help our new restaurant succeed in the city of Davenport. New housing nearby will increase our restaurant patrons. Additionally, the walkable commercial amenities will establish this as a high-end area for dining, retail, and convenience. This development will assist in making the city of Davenport relevant and competitive with other cities looking to attract top talent. Thanks for your consideration. Troy Zimmerman, co-owner of Monarch Restaurant." Next one. "Dear Mayor, City Council members, my name is Kathy Hetrick, and I live at 5166 Dove Court, Bettendorf. My home is located at the northeast area of the Sophie Foster property. I have concerns regarding the rezoning of this property. When we went through the process previously, the property to the north was zoned commercial. I do not think that anyone was happy with the outcome of that rezoning. Nobody wants businesses in their backyard, especially when they have no idea what those businesses will be. I ask that the entire property be zoned for residential, single-family detached homes. This would be consistent with the neighborhood, including the neighborhood to the west, where the, all the area is homes, right up to 53rd Street. There are many reasons why this would be best for the community. One is that the congestion on 53rd is almost untenable. Single-family detached homes would add to the congestion, but not nearly as much as what is being proposed tonight. Second, the homes should be of the same value and type as those around it. There are no apartments or townhomes stuck in with the existing family, single-family detached homes in the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed townhomes would detract from the development of the area neighborhoods. Third, there is already a shortage of single-family detached homes in this area. I hear about it frequently from my realtor friends and acquaintances. I believe the reason so many people are looking at high-end rentals is because there are no homes to purchase. As soon as one comes on the market, it is purchased, often in just a matter of days. This is a serious need that you could help fulfill. Fourth, I realize that this property is extremely expensive. However, just because the property owner wants an exorbitant price for their property does not mean that the property owner should get it. The reason we must keep going through this process is that in order for the property owner to get what the exorbitant price desired, developers must build more congestion or congested housing in the area. This is not fair to the homeowners who have poured their life savings into their properties. We simply want to keep the integrity of our neighborhood. Fifth, if we must have commercial properties in our backyard, which would not make us happy, I ask that it be separated by a fence, like many places in the area. We would rather not have our backyards available to strangers. The trees and brush would look nice, but it needs to be done with fencing. Thank you for your time. Kathy Hendrick. Dear sir, I would like to state, I feel the developers are doing a great job trying to accommodate the current residents. That being said, it appears the developers are trying to build too many homes on this small parcel of land. I believe this is because the cost of the land is so high. My question for the council is, why are we changing zoning and ordinances to accommodate a few parties so they can sell their property? I believe the cost of this parcel of land is forcing the builders to request rezoning in order to make a profit on the land acquisition. Corey Knight, 5004 Hamilton Drive. And last one. Quad Cities Chamber. Honorable Mike Mattson. "Dear Mayor Mattson, I am writing in support of the rezoning of the Sophie Foster property at 4607 East 53rd Street. The Quad Cities Chamber supports the rezoning to enable a well-planned, responsive, and relevant development opportunity to become a reality. In reviewing the plans, there are significant designs in place to balance neighboring property owner concerns with the opportunity to create new, single, and multifamily housing, attract new commercial activity, and generate property and sales tax to benefit the city of Davenport and the Quad Cities region. This development will provide diverse housing options needed to attract workforce to the Quad Cities area. In addition, the proposed commercial amenities are consistent with the 53rd Street corridor that is an important region quality of life. Thank you for your consideration of this proposed rezoning. Please contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Paul Rummler, President and CEO, Quad Cities Chamber." So, thank you for sending me those. And now, is there anyone in attendance that would like to comment? Okay, hearing is hearing. None? There's a motion? So, there is. Please come.
Kevin Dolan with the development team. I have a couple items to present based on requests from Committee of the Whole last week. You can pull up the first one, Brian. This looks complicated. Perfect. Thank you. Oh, did I break it? Perfect. So, what you're seeing here is an alternative development concept of the same site overlaid with the existing zoning. In the yellow, you see R4, which allows duplex and single-family homes, and red is C2, which allows townhomes and multifamily. The purpose of this exhibit is to show an example of what would be allowed without any rezoning whatsoever. As you can see, this concept looks substantially similar to what we're proposing. Along the perimeter, we placed small houses, and then put an equal number of duplex lots in the middle, and finally, townhomes in the red area in the north. Now, all of this conforms to the existing zoning, and in this concept, our density would be around 145 units, so roughly 20% to 25% lower than what we're currently proposing. But, instead of accessing the site only from 53rd Street, here we have connections east and west from 51st Street over to Hawk Drive, and north-south from 53rd directly down to Eastbury. And all that traffic from the commercial site could come directly south or east to avoid the lights on 53rd. And the reason I wanted to show you this is to demonstrate that our interests and the interests of the neighbors are very much aligned in this case. And I say that because from the first neighborhood meeting, from that first meeting on, the number-one concern we heard from the community was about through traffic on residential streets, especially extreme opposition to 53rd connecting to Eastbury or east to Hawk Drive. We saw this again last week when Mayor Mattson read letters from the neighbors. By far, the single most prevalent concern we heard was about traffic coming on to residential streets. The irony of this situation is that one of the current zoning conditions actually requires that all of those connections to neighborhood streets be made, including connecting Eastbury directly to 53rd. And as part of our rezoning request, we are asking to remove that condition. I say our interests are aligned because I don't believe anyone would notice 20% greater density, but they would absolutely notice if 53rd over to Hawk to get over to 18th, or 53rd down Eastbury to Crow Creek became the new short cruts across town. And by approving this rezoning, you will ensure that that never happens. So, with that, Brian... Sorry, no, I have the clicker. So, once again, the concept that we are actually proposing, you'll see, one of the first concessions we made was to remove all of those connections, so our only access is north to 53rd. Other concessions we've made, just as a reminder, this has been quite a long process, agreeing to building height restrictions, expanded buffer yards, and to only build two-unit duplex-style structures along the, where we abut the existing housing, instead of the townhomes that we had originally proposed. The second thing that I was asked to come here this evening with are some conceptual renderings of what the buildings might look like. So, here we have a front elevation of one of our proposed duplex-style structures, primarily three-bedroom, built with a basement, an option to finish down below for a fourth bedroom. Here's another angle. This is the townhome version of it, with four units instead of two. And then here's the backyards, back rear view. And that's it, unless there's any questions from council or me.
Not right now. Do you have it? I'm sure they'll bring you up. Yep, Roger that. Yep, all good. Okay, so, anyone else from the public? Pausing. Okay, now entertain any discussion. We have a motion and a second. Now entertain any discussion from Alderman. I see Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, do you mind if I just ask just a couple of questions? Thank you again for presenting that information that we requested. And so, in that diagram with, so if you kind of conform to current zoning, on there it said lot total 114, correct?
That's correct. 114, and that includes, this whole section in the, in the middle are duplex lots, so while there only count as 31 lots, that's twice the number of households or units.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then, my other question would be, if we weren't taking into consideration the request to cut off that, cut off traffic, what would prevent that from happening? to cut off that, cut off traffic, what would prevent that from happening?
I guess I'm not sure that I understand the question, I'm sorry.
So why ask for the rezoning? I guess, why ask for the rezoning in the first place if that can be done conceptually?
From our perspective, greater density is more economically viable.
Fair enough. Cool. All right, thank you very much. So with that, you know, I want to start just being clear to my colleagues this evening that I would like you all to vote yes for this first consideration, just to keep the process moving along, knowing we're going to have three readings of this. We need to continue this six-week-long process moving forward. I myself will actually vote no this evening because still want to try and iron out just a couple of conditions. I, again, thank the petitioners for their willingness to work with the neighbors, work with me, work with staff as the process is moving forward. You know, of note, since last week where there was a second neighborhood meeting put on by the petitioners, again, thank you, and the Committee of the Whole where the new concept plan was presented, you know, I've been able to survey the neighbors in the area, and some of the results of that survey were interesting. So one of the first questions I asked was, do you oppose rezoning of this land of any kind? 42% said yes, while 58% said no. They're in favor of rezoning with conditions being met. So the pendulum is kind of swinging a little bit. 79% of those surveyed were in favor of the rezoning with the condition of not connecting to the neighborhoods to the new development, which, as Mr. Dolan mentioned, was kind of the primary concern. You know, people don't want this to become a cut-through, which is being addressed with the conditions that the petitioners are meeting. 54% desired that the residential component to stay R4. It does kind of create that little inconvenience, kind of the rub here that we discussed, kind of back and forth, but then, as continued to ask, 81% would be in favor of condition, sorry, kind of moving forward, 81% would be in favor of condition limiting height of the commercial properties on the eastern and western border, which is addressed in the current 2011 ordinance. And then lastly, when kind of reiterated that first question, worded a little different way, 70% of those surveyed would prefer to rezone with conditions in order to prevent from having to repeat this process in the future, kind of wanting to say, hey, let's come together, let's figure this out, let's be done with it, develop and move on. So I found that very interesting data. You know, I do, I will continue to work with neighbors, kind of hearing their voice, and again, appreciate that. Circling back around, you know, we're here because the petitioners need both the rezoning of the residential component as well as removal of 2011 ordinance conditions to complete their concept plan. So both components. We focus a lot on the residential, but both components actually need some changes, and that's why we're here. You know, many of us in the council have asked which parts of the residential concept plan need rezoning, and really, it's everything. Everything that they're asking to do needs this rezoning because, as he showed, you know, with the first plan, he's incorporated that at least 50% detached, single-family homes, which aren't included in this, and then, you know, some of the other changes. So kind of take that into consideration moving forward. You know, maintaining the closure of the connecting streets is a very positive step going forward, but, you know, there's also a lot of different things that are needing to be reversed to make this rezoning happen. So it's not just we need to rezone for the residential component. Reinforcing that, you know, some of the things from the commercial component are the removal of that 275-foot setback that was placed in the 2011 ordinance on the east and western boundaries. Also, in the commercial component, the current ordinance reads that only six commercial buildings be developed. If I believe correctly, the current petitioners, the petitioners currently asking for nine commercial properties, which is a 50% increase. You know, also, the current ordinance calls for professional office buildings for residential uses, where now, petitioners looking for more commercialized, you know, higher-end, let's bring people in, let's have some amenities here, which could create a significantly higher demand in this area. You know, so we've referenced and we received some information on the 2018 traffic study. Thank you, Laura, for getting me some further data. You know, we'll continue working going forward, analyzing that. I know I still have a lot more questions. And so, you know, I want to conclude with this. You know, I thank, you know, those neighbors, everyone involved for continuing to provide input. You know, I want to continue to thank the petitioners for being willing partners in this, you know, providing good faith to meet needs, demands on both ends. And, you know, I also want to thank staff, specifically Laura, for, you know, continuing to help, you know, guide me, provide direction and input, you know, as this process moves forward. So again, you know, I urge all my fellow council members this evening to vote yes. And again, I will be voting no this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, we got a great neighborhood. It's very comfortable coming down to City Hall and petition in the City Hall, and that's great. We got two great developers that are local, and they got a history of doing tremendous projects. We got an Alderman that's doing an outstanding job, working with both groups. Good government is give, take, and compromise, come up with a solution. You know, 53rd Street is the economic engine for the whole Quad Cities, and I've worked with Ms. Foster for a long time down at City Hall, and I think this is a great project, and, you know, I'll support it through. I got a little concerns about shutting down the entrance and the exits, but I'm sure we'll get that worked out, so, good job, Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had a couple comments I wanted to make, and questions, too, perhaps. I know that in the last go-round with this property, there was a lot of concern, and maybe one of the reasons why the six commercial buildings were there, there were a lot of concerns about what might happen at the periphery, what kind of commercial would be there, particularly late-night drive-throughs, you know, right at the edge where it would butt up against existing homes there on the north side of the commercial area. So, and I have a feeling that's one of the reasons why the six buildings were there. So I guess I'm asking, maybe staff, Laura, maybe, is there a way in trying to work through this to control those kinds? I'm thinking about late-night, you know, drive-throughs, picking up lights flashing into houses and that kind of thing, which isn't a very comfortable thing if you're used to, you know, being in a house and having that. That's a very different experience than, say, a salon or an office building that's next door to your house where people are there and they're gone. So can you speak to that a little bit? Is there a way to control that in the approval?
Well, I think that staff would say that that would be a decision that would have to come to agreement between City Council and the petitioner, if that's something they're willing to add as a condition. That would be the only way to control that. Otherwise, anything that is permitted in a C2 by right would be allowed to go in there.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And Alderman Jobchin, thank you for the great job you're doing. I had a question. You talked about the people who you surveyed. Can you kind of give us a number of people you talked to or households you spoke with? And that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. So throughout all this, created email distribution that's got about 60 of the residents within and around that protest zone, and so, small sample of that group, 40 people, I believe, 40 respondents ended up responding to that survey in the last few days. So not everybody, small sample, but, you know, again, it's one of those where, you know, initially, when there was very significant detraction against this, there is recognition of, again, a willingness. Obviously, there's still some opposition, but yes. Hopefully, that answers your question in a roundabout way.
You good, Alderwoman McGinnis? Okay, good. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Right, is it on? Okay. Building on Alderwoman McGinnis's question, I hadn't thought of this, but looking at the C2, there's a lot of parking lots along the edge, and parking lots, I believe, require a certain amount of lighting. Is that correct? Laura, I think this might be a question for you. Are there any conditions that the lighting has to be directly down so that it doesn't affect the neighbors on either side?
We do have in our zoning code information related to what amount of lighting is allowed to leave the site. It's a one-foot candle, which is not a lot, and so there's ways to redirect light so it doesn't impact neighbors. As well as, I did provide, staff, our city council head asked us to prepare information related to the existing conditions and zoning as it sits today. If you're interested, I do have that information.
Okay, but that would be part of it.
Yep, so that's standard pieces of our code. So this development, whoever develops it would have to meet all of our city code, one of which is wherever commercial abuts residential, it is required to do a fence with landscaping. And then the lighting would also be reviewed by staff as part of the site plan.
Okay, because the parking lights would be higher than any fencing and probably for a long time, any trees.
Yep, and there's ways to redirect the light away from property owners.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
You good, Alderwoman Lee?
Yes.
Right, okay. Anyone else? Pausing. Very good, hearing no one else. Brian, City Clerk, please call the roll on first consideration.
Doorman?
Yes.
Ambrose? Jobchin?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Very good. The ordinance moves to second consideration, just so everybody knows, that means two more cycles, four weeks, more of discussions, both at the Committee of the Whole and council. So thank you. Okay, next item is our motion for approval of all items on the consent. There's a motion and a second. Brian, please roll call for consent.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
I will abstain from the assumption, high school item under number 15, due to a conflict. Otherwise, yes for everything else.
McGinnis?
Yes to everything, but I'm abstaining from 707 Gaines Street and the URT.
Okay. Gripp?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yes.
Ten yeses and abstaining notes that I have from McGinnis and Jobchin.
Thank you. So the consent's approved. Next item is, are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions? There are none this evening. Next item, is there any public with business? If there is, please step to the podium. Please give us your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you are from, and you will have five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Willie Shorter. I live at 501 West Third. Here's the letters from the last time we filed about how we've been mistreated, racially profiled against in this building, calling the N-word. Here's our letters. These is just half of the letters. And the letter just on top is a woman that has been molested and raped in her apartment. I have another letter in there where they barricade their doors. And every time I come down here and ask y'all, do y'all want to see these letters? No one wants to see these letters. So that's why I've been going out of state, taking them and showing them to different agencies. I'm going to keep doing this because someone says they haven't responded to me. No one hasn't responded to me about this incident, and I'm not going to let it go. I'm trying my hardest not to take it in my own hands, but I feel like I'm being ignored here. I was humiliated for five years in this building, and these letters, and some of these letters before I even moved in this building, where they done filed racial complaints, and no one is looking at these letters because they can't, because you guys refuse to pass them on to our NAACP and Civil Rights Division to do something about it. So I have been talking to other agencies outside of Iowa, and I have got some attention from Black Times and Black Pride. It's going to go further than this because I'm not going to let, I'm not going to stop. I'm not going to stop. That just is unacceptable to me. I don't take no crap in the street, and I'm not going to let nobody think they can just keep doing this to me where I place or where I live. And it's like y'all just study slamming doors, or study trying to sweep all this under the rug. So every Wednesday, I'm going to keep bringing information for y'all, and one of these days, I'm going to come in that door with some people that y'all going to have to answer to, because the simple fact is, I'm reaching out every day, all night, every day, to where it's messing with me mentally and physically. And Lord knows, I don't want it to get mentally. So therefore, this is all I got to say. Mayor, if you want to see these letters?
Mr. Shorter, if you'd give those to the clerk, we'll make sure, because nobody here that I've--
I know, I know. I'll make you copies. I'll make sure you got copies tomorrow.
That's right, because I don't believe anybody here has told you you can't give us letters.
No. It's just that when I tried to get some people to see them last time, nobody wanted to listen to them.
I don't know who that is.
That's when Mayor Clifton and his--
We'll be happy to take them.
--was in the office. I just want other people to understand this is not going to go away.
I understand. You have a new mayor, and we're happy to take him.
All right, this is going to be a very serious problem here.
Please give them to the clerk, and we'll be happy to take care of that.
Okay, I'll make sure you get copies.
Anyone else have any business? Again, name, order, address, and if you're not here, we'd love to know where you're from. Of course, we know who you are.
I'm Kathy Wayne with River Action, and I just want to say thank you. We, just getting through this resolution, we exchanged a lot of facts, worked on a lot of timelines, and what it means is, you have confidence in us, and we have confidence in you, and we're really glad to be working now to get that major campaign fundraising going. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your work. Anyone else? Pausing. Very good. Any other reports, City Minister Spiegel? No. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good week, be safe.